Ready to go as well?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, good. Well, we will then call to order our meeting of May 4th from 4:00 till 6:30. And we'll see if we do need to go that long. And the first thing we're going to do is the pledge of allegiance. And we're going to ask our terrific Assistant City Manager to show a flag for us on screen, please. All right. So if everybody will join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you so much. Let's please go to roll call. So we can ask our thoughtful Acting City Clerk to introduce the council, please.
Councilmember Albert?
Here.
Councilmember Hatha?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Roberson?
Here. Thank you, Clementine. Our first thing on the agenda is, well, first, third thing on the agenda is public comments. And these are public comments for anything not on the agenda. If you have some things you'd like to share with us, and they're agenda items, we ask that you wait, and we will certainly recognize you. And Nat, do we have anyone in the queue for a public comment? And before you tell us that, would you explain how people can participate in our meeting, please?
Yes. Happy to, Mr. Mayor. So the way members of the public can participate in our council meetings is to watch the broadcast on YouTube Live, which has a short delay of approximately 10 seconds. Folks can watch at youtube.com backslash City of Monterey, or on the YouTube app on Google Play or the Apple App Stores. To make a public comment, when viewers watching live on YouTube, or also on Channel 25, see the Chyron, also known as the lower third caption at the bottom of your screen. As you've seen over the past minute or so, please call the conference line. We do, as part of the Chyron, try to include the information on what agenda item you can call in for to comment as part of this public comment process. The number to dial is area code 831-225-0330. And when prompted, you'll be entering in the code 1927648. Once you've entered the system, you can dial *5 to virtually raise your hand, and then you'll be added into the queue to speak. Callers will be automatically unmuted until it is their turn to speak. We do ask the callers, please turn off your television or computer speakers, or go to another room while you're connected by phone, because any background noise will indeed cause interference with this broadcast. We look forward to receiving public comment through this process today, as we do with other council and public meetings. Thank you.
All right, good. Nat, thank you. And so again, do we have anyone who has a public comment that's about any item not on the agenda?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then why don't we just go ahead then? And we'll take a look at our consent items. Yes.
We got a request to pull item number five for the presentation.
All right, very good. I think they're all worthy of that, so we'll pull five. I would simply point out item two, where we have the Alvarado Street Maintenance District. And this is to lay the levy the assessment and go out and ask the property owner to contribute to that, as well as Kai Principal to, we have a, come on, the nerve, the word escapes me now. It's, come on, Hans. Now, where we have to have a certain number of negative comments, otherwise it passes. And so if we don't get, if we get enough approvals for this, sorry?
Protest vote?
Thank you. I don't know. Hey, senior moment. Yes, it's a protest vote. And so we know that all of our merchants on Alvarado Street and Kai Principal, we've been doing this for years, and that's one of the ways we finance and keep our streets beautiful. It's good to note that the YMC, YWC of Monterey County is working with our wonderful police department to combat domestic violence response and donating over $22,000. And that's item four. And we also know because of the stay-at-home shelter that domestic violence is skyrocketing, which is sad period, and even more sad in this situation. Then finally, on number six, this is part of the contract that the city has with the Army. And so the monies there are actually being paid for by our Presidio Monterey Agreement. It's not coming out of the general fund in case people were wondering where all of a sudden the city got this money. It's all federal money. And it's the Monterey model where the city of Monterey provides Public Works and other services to the Defense Language Institute and saves them money. And, and it's also good for our city. So that's what those items are about. If there are any questions or comments, we'll go to number five. Councilmembers, any questions, comments on anything but five, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Councilmember Ed.
Just a comment on item number two, although I'm not a property owner in the Cali Principale District, I'm a tenant. So for that one, I will not be voting. I'll refuse on that one.
All right, so please note that Clementine when we take the vote. Thank you, Ed. All right, so why don't we, I'll do this. I'll make a motion to approve the consent minus item five, please.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Sorry for the pause. Councilmember Hatha.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes. So let's go to our talented City Manager and he, Hans Uslar, for item five for a member of the public. Did they have a question or did that person want a presentation?
No, I think it was requested to have a brief presentation to understand better what, what this item means and what it entails. And with that, I would just hand it over to our Community Development Director, Kimberly Cole, who has prepared a quick presentation.
Good. You know, which before you do that, my, my bad, I should have asked if there was any public comment in the queue about the other consent items. Nat, any, anybody on the phone wanting to comment that you know?
Nope, we put it, we put the Chyron up for both public comment and pulling items on the consent calendar and there were no.
All right, well, let's make sure if some do come along that we catch them. Now, this is, I'm glad somebody did that in the public because this is something that's very important and really outlines a lot of the good things the city is doing. So let's go to our top quality Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. It's an honor today to present the General Plan Annual Report to you. This is a required report that we submit to the state of California. And we have a lot of accomplishments to be proud of and also some areas that we need to continue to work. So General Plan accomplishments, our general plan places a heavy emphasis on economic development and our partnerships with our educational and educational partners, the fishing industry and our military. We have a lot to celebrate with the Monterey Bay Aquarium Education Center opening this year. That was an effort that took at least over two years from concept to opening day. So a lot to be proud of. The Middlebury Institute of International Studies is located right next to City Hall. And they've been working on implementation of their master plan. And the city council approved an easement to help create a campus center for the university. And in addition, we've been working with the university on student housing options. And in the very near future, you'll see those come to the Planning Commission. The fishing industry is very important to our heritage as well as our economic interests. And the city council has spent a considerable amount of time working on WRF two leases this past year. In terms of military planning, the city was successful in obtaining a substantial grant. And it's for a land use plan document to look at compatibility issues and how to strengthen relationships between the military and city. And we're very excited about that. General Plan accomplishments also include for housing production, the city council amended our general plan to allow housing on Garden Road. And you'll see later in this presentation, that's probably the most significant change that may result in additional housing. Energy conservation, we continue to make that a priority. And the, the creation of our regional energy provider has really resulted in some successes with that. In terms of open space preservation, our general plan contained a number of policies encouraging that the city work towards completion or acquisition of the old capital site, and that was achieved this year. In terms of historic preservation, the city received a grant to prepare a historic survey of the Alta Mesa neighborhood. And the city council recently adopted that document. I need to spend a little bit more time on our housing element goals because it's required by state law. Our target given to the city of Monterey is 650 housing units. We have successfully issued building permits for 87. And we have a remaining RENA goal of 563 units. I think it's really important when you look at these numbers to realize this doesn't reflect the total number of projects entitled. In fact, last year, the city entitled over 110 new housing units, but they don't count under state guidelines until they apply for a building permit. So I think that's an important distinction. So how are we closing this gap? And quite frankly, the number one issue that's outlined in our general plan is acquisition of water supply. And we're working on an immediate opportunity with the State Water Resources Control Board to look at a negotiated settlement regarding the cease and desist order condition number two. And the reason for that is there might be an opportunity to obtain some water from the water district that's currently held in reserve. And you'll see in a few minutes why that's so important. Long term, or hopefully not that long, we need to, as a region, ensure that the cease and desist order is lifted and that our water supply not only addresses our deficit in water, but also allows for new construction. Because that's the only way we're really going to be able to intensify and be able to have more housing development in our community. So as you know, today, all sites must have a couple of things in order to move forward for any new construction, especially housing construction. It has to have an existing water meter. So if you have a vacant site without a walker, a water meter, it's not developable. You also have to have enough water credits on site. So that's why I've seen projects like nightclubs close and being replaced with housing units. So that's really important for you to understand. So there's some projects that are, that you're very familiar with. In fact, really excited, 2200 North Fremont was just submitted for building permit this week. So it will count in the 2020 RENA goals. And that was, I believe, around 40 units, of which eight will be affordable units for low income and for moderate. That's a really exciting project for our community. The council also approved 300 Cannery Row where we're taking an old warehouse that's currently sitting vacant and allowing eight residential units to be constructed within it. And then offsite, and that's in the photograph to the right, there will be two affordable units in that Cannery Row district. So another real opportunity. The project on 591 East Franklin, this is a really early version of that, is coming along. And I think we'll see that entitled in the next year. The city was able to provide a little bit of water to this project. And our city council also amended the downtown specific plan to allow a little bit of increased density for the site. The most significant change that the council has made in the last year was to rezone parts of Garden Road to allow residential development. Total development capacity on Garden Road is approximately 400 units. And I've starred three sites that are looking particularly promising. So I wanted to just show you a little bit about what water means for projects. On the left side for the base units are the number of units that the developers think they can construct on the site with the existing water credits. The water district has about, I think, six or seven acre feet of water available that we're really proposing be put towards these more shovel-ready projects. Some of our other surrounding communities actually have a water allocation. And you can see what a difference it makes for this project. We could go from a potentially 110 dwelling units to 302 if we're able to negotiate the settlement with the State Water Resources Control Board. So we're very excited about this. These developers are very enthusiastic about these sites. And we see it as a real opportunity to move forward. So just remember that number 302, that's a big number for the city of Monterey in terms of construction. And would be a substantial step towards meeting our RENA goals. We still expect to fall short. Our remaining RENA goals are 563 housing units. And we're looking at about 300 units that might be possible under this negotiated settlement. If that doesn't happen, then I think the best we can hope for is around 100 units, as I showed in that graphic. The key issue in our general plan and to meet our housing element goals is we really need a water supply to build housing in our community. And I know that we're committed as a region to obtain that water supply. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and my report is complete.
Oh, thank you for that nice report. Council questions, comments?
I have one.
Councilmember Ed, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Kim, thank you very much. A great report. The staff report has a lot of material in here. And I know this is a review process for us tonight. Could you explain a little bit in terms of leading up to this, how the Planning Commission may approach the overall general plan and how they can process in terms of review on an annual basis? I'd like to know a little bit more about the Planning Commission's role in this.
So the Planning Commission, with every land use decision that's made, looks for consistency with our general plan. So it is, our general plan is implemented almost every other week. There's a discussion about our general plan goals and how projects meet those goals. If you're discussing specifically the housing section, the Planning Commission has been very supportive of creative new ideas coming forth to provide additional housing. And I think the Garden Road recommendation to the council is a really good indication of that commitment.
Great. And a follow-up question on that is what's before us tonight? We're able to see the identified gold, the goal, and then the subheading to that policy. That's very helpful. And then we track what's happened, how it's changed, maybe the progress. So that's also very, very helpful to, to see those two side by side. How often does the side of the notation of progress get changed? Is that only on an annual basis?
Correct.
And then, and that's what we're seeing tonight is, and if I looked back to a year ago, I would see a different document.
Well, interestingly enough, a year ago, we weren't required to submit the same report that we are today. The state of California is getting, or especially with its housing element reporting. If you look a year ago, two years ago, it was a simple table that we had to submit. And the requirements are strengthening due to the legislature's commitment to constructing new affordable housing. So the reports submitted in past years look more like progress tables than they do such a comprehensive report.
Yeah, and this is very helpful to see what the goal is aligned to the progress of it. And so I would encourage anybody that's listening or watching that they should go online, pull this document, open it up and go through each one of the pages because it's very informative to see what's happening, what's still pending and align that to the actual policy in the general plan. So very helpful and thank you very much, Kim.
You're welcome.
Good. And I was, Councilmember Allen, did you want to comment?
Oh, yeah, question.
Yes, please.
So I prefer, so I appreciate the staff capturing all of the important policy decisions we've made in the past year. And, and I think that's great. We're going in the direction we're going. One thing we did a few years ago that isn't reflected, and I, and I understand why because probably doesn't care, but I think it actually does have a big impact on housing and affordability, and that's short-term vacation rentals. So a few years ago, we gave direction to more actively enforce that. It's my impression that the staff are doing that. I guess, and I don't know, Kim, if it's, if it's even possible to acquire this data, but I would be interested in seeing, and I think it would be helpful for the public to see how many units that were being, being rented in a short-term way are now being lived in, in a long-term way, the ownership or, or long-term rental. Because I think it has a big impact and, and it's something that doesn't get really captured in the, in the data and in the picture that we, we, we are providing to the state. So that's my question. Can we do that? Is that something we can get in the future or not?
So I can provide a variation of that data. We have, we monitor monthly how many units we have found that are being used to short-term rentals and our enforcement actions and to bring those properties into compliance. So I do have that data.
I can add a little bit. Add in the future. Thank you.
I can add a little bit more additional information, shall we say? At the height of the short-term rental and council recall, Councilmember Hatha recalls it correctly. We were for the longest time complaint-based enforcement. And then we went into an active enforcement mode. But when we were based, basically doing complaint-based enforcement, we had rental prop, short-term rentals anywhere between 200 to 220, 230 units that we tracked as illegal short-term rentals. When we went into the active enforcement, we have, we have brought the number of illegal rentals down to about 50 to 70 now per month. I think the number right now is hovering around 60 as an average. So one should not make directly the assumption that 220 minus 60 is we return 160 units into the housing market. But there's a great deal of truth to that to see units have returned in my own neighborhood from my own observations. I see, I see now renters back in apartments that have been previously used as short-term rentals. So yes, there is an effect.
Yeah, great question, Alan. Good answer. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have, I have a question, Dan. Kim, thank you very much for the report. And as the council members mentioned, it's good for the public to see all the policies that we have implemented or changed in one big package. That's great. I do have a question to land use changes. We made a pretty big, I think the council made a pretty big decision earlier this year about moving from commercial zoning to R3 to allow more housing. Is there, is there a way that we could put this in this report? Or is it not appropriate for this report to mention that policy change? Because I thought that was a pretty big policy change.
Are you discussing the downtown specific plan or?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Yeah. Yes, we can add that. I thought, I don't think I highlighted it in my presentation, but it might be in the report. So I will look at that.
Yeah, I was looking forward in the report and I didn't see it, but might be buried and maybe I just didn't see.
And it may have been approved in January. I need to look at the approval date.
Okay, great.
Good point. Okay, anyone else? No? Nat, any comment from the public on this?
Yes, yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our one comment from Zoe Carter. Zoe, you're now unmuted. Welcome to the City Council meeting.
Hi, this is Zoe Carter. You all know me. I'm the Chair of ARC. And I have also noticed that there have been a lot of applications coming through that have been members of our community that are also putting ADU, if you want to call them that, on their property. And I think that's a really, another great way to increase our housing as well. But I also just want to thank Kim for preparing a report on this. And I'm the one that asked for this to be pulled just to get another great discussion about what was going on because I think it's really important to expand on all this. And we wouldn't have had this great conversation if we didn't get to talk about this. And we wouldn't have had this great conversation if we didn't get to talk about this. So I appreciate everybody's time and, um, talking about the housing and the water and the need for the water. So we can get our RENA goals. So I appreciate that. That's all good.
Thank you, Zoe. Stay safe and healthy. Anyone else?
Nope, no other.
All right, then I. Then I'll, I'll invite a motion for approval. Anyone?
A motion to approve.
And a secondary?
Uh, I'll second, Ed here.
All right. There's no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Rogerson?
Yes.
All right. Uh, thanks, everybody. Good discussion. A public appearance, the next, uh, three items are extraordinarily important. And a continuation, basically, of what we've been doing for the last two months. So I wanted to turn it over immediately to our unequaled city manager, who's going to report on COVID-19 response efforts. And Hans, I don't know if you were going to mention our beach, but I know we did have quite a few calls and emails on that. And a lot of gratitude that it's still open and that, uh, uses are defined. And so other things that are happening. So I'll turn it over to you, please. Hans, city manager.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I'm, uh, switching over to show you my presentation.
Okay, how many windows do you have open? Don't answer that.
So is, is my screen visible?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is a verbal update about the, uh, COVID-19. Uh, as we are now in week eight or nine or something like that with respect to, uh, the shelter in place order. Um, on May, uh, 4th, yesterday, one minute past midnight, uh, the county health officer extended the shelter in place order. Um, in, in broad strokes, the, the shelter in place, uh, remains in effect. There have been no lifting of restrictions with respect to, uh, requiring the public to, to shelter in place and only leave their homes, uh, and places of living for essential activities. Uh, a, a key element of the new order, uh, revised order, shelter in place, uh, was to allow construction. Uh, the, the restrictions have been lifted, uh, uh, with the conditions that strict social distancing and procedures have to be applied at the various work sites. Our building inspection team is, uh, responding, uh, responding. Um, and we, we have, uh, already seen an, an uptick again in inspections and contractors submitting plans, asking for permits. So that is one of the key elements of the new shelter in place order lifting certain restrictions that were imposed on construction. Uh, also the health officer, uh, allowed nurseries, landscaping, gardening companies, uh, and stores that are selling fabrics and crafts to allow making masks, face coverings. He allowed those doors to be open. Uh, he also allowed golfing to be open. And, uh, he also clarified, uh, a certain way of conducting real estate transactions. And all those have, uh, have attached to it very, uh, thoughtful appendices that are explaining the social distancing and the rules in how to operate those type of businesses. Um, uh, to, to, to my, uh, uh, relief, tennis and pickleball are still not allowed. So we don't have those conflicts coming sooner, uh, than later to us. But, uh, tennis, basketball, pickleball, uh, pools, germs are still not allowed to operate. Uh, I think it's, it's fair to assess that, uh, the shelter in place has been successful. Uh, across the state, you, you see the data points, uh, pointing towards, um, uh, uh, flattening of the curve, less of death, lesser, lesser hospitalizations. Um, the, the shelter in place saves lives. And what a lot of folks need to understand, it might have, it might have saved your life. Um, the, the challenge that we are going through right now also is that the rules are pretty clear. They are black and white. There is no gray. And, uh, I, I fully understand the, the impatience of, of many of our residents and of our businesses of just pushing a little bit more, getting into a gray zone and asking questions that, that are all well-intended. Um, but keep in mind, uh, what, what we are, uh, what we have faced and what we are still going through right now is saving lives. And it might have saved your own life. And the rules that we, that are in place right now are black and white, and we are applying those rules. Uh, Mayor, you pointed out a few things. Uh, here are pressing issues, calls that we are receiving right now is, uh, everyone wants to go out and, uh, fish for the salmon. The, the, the sport fishing salmon season has started. Uh, our launch ramp is still closed. Um, we are still, uh, we are still respecting the shelter in place rules. And if you have to haul your boat from Prundale to, to Monterey to launch it, you are violating shelter in place rules. So we've asked the, the county health officer to give us clarification because we understand that a lot of our, uh, residents, as well as other folks like to really go sport fishing right now. And I just, we're on the season, it's not too shabby this year. But it, as a matter of fact, if your boat is not next to the launch ramp, you have to haul it, you're breaking the filter in place order. So we hope we get some clarification there because we have, uh, received a lot of calls about that. Uh, another part is, uh, the no parking on Tide Avenue. We, we tried to really, um, respond to the governor's, uh, shelter in place order and to his threat of closing all beaches. And a week ago, this was a real scenario that, that the, the governor had threatened the public with. And by responding to that, we, we created, I think, a very balanced approach. And part of that is, uh, certain parking restrictions on Tide Avenue, uh, in the Del Monte Beach area. We have re- received some complaints now about the no parking. And, uh, again, we are, we're trying to, to deal with that in a, in a very respectful way. Um, in more detail, um, I can tell you that what we have, what we have implemented, uh, around town, especially also around the beaches is working. It's successful. It's a successful balanced approach that, that has been copied now by, by other cities. And, uh, we have, uh, uh, achieved a wide compliance. Um, the, the, uh, the folks are getting the message. And I, I think with that, we have preserved the ability of our residents to continue using our beaches and are, what we are allowing is simple walking, jogging, running, ocean recreational uses, uh, of course wheelchair use. Um, we ask for social distancing and we recommend, uh, facial, uh, face, face coverings. Um, what else have we done? We continue our public outreach. And I think also we, we are doing a pretty good job there. We, we have conducted, I believe, over 35 daily media calls now. Um, daily, our, uh, communication office, our public information office, Alori Welgar sends out COVID-19 emails. I think yesterday we hit number 30. And, and they, they pop up Monday through Friday, like clockwork between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. Uh, we, we issued a city, special city focus edition about COVID-19. Um, every two weeks, uh, uh, I am posting live on YouTube, um, a message to all our residents that is interactive. Uh, residents can ask questions and also, uh, they can pull down this, uh, YouTube video at any time they, they like to watch it if they are not prevented, if they are prevented from watching it, uh, Thursday mornings. Uh, we're posting on social media. We have increased public signage. And, uh, we are posting, uh, uh, on, on, on our changeable message, message signs, CMS, uh, in, in, in Spanish as well as in English. So, um, the, we try to really inform the, 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 the public. We try to really work, uh, with the public to find common ground, find understanding. And again, reminding everyone, uh, while the sun is, is out there right now and the bay is blue, we're still facing a deadly disease.
Hans, uh, just a quick question on the last slide. Could you just share with the, with the community about how they can get on the mailing list for those COVID-19 local updates, please?
Yeah, uh, the, the, it's on our website. You can sign up for constant contact. Um, um, monterey.org forward slash COVID-19. And, and there, there you find opportunities to sign up for that. We actually have over 450, uh, additional signups in the past two months. So a lot of folks, uh, understand that this is valuable information. It has a different value than information that is sometimes shared on social media such as Nextdoor. Uh, we have a good credibility factor and a lot of folks have signed up. And I just encourage them, contact us, uh, sign up for this. If you hear something, let us know. We're happy to find out, uh, how much truth is in some of those rumors that are being shared. Um, on the city manager's side, uh, all the city managers are, are meeting once a week, uh, usually on a Friday. Uh, and that includes all the city managers from Santa Cruz and Benito and Monterey County. And we are pushing Governor Newsom right now to really help us with funding for our, um, local communities, uh, cities under $500,000, uh, under 500,000 residents have been overlooked by, by the federal government. And, uh, we are encouraging the governor to, to work with us. He understands the message. He is working with us. But we want to be sure that, uh, our small counties and our small cities receive funding. Uh, without that funding, we, we probably will have way more challenges to survive than, uh, if we would get some, some moderate funding. Um, here's what your staff is working on right now. Uh, you approved, uh, two weeks ago, Tuesday night, a local economic, economic stimulus plan. Uh, we have assigned a senior staffer to that. Uh, he is working on setting up program details. Uh, we are discussing right now whether we should switch it to grants versus loans. And of course, we will bring the council into that discussion at, at one time as well. Um, we are working with the chamber and the community foundation to help us, uh, set up the, 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 the program and the criteria for that program. And all those, um, um, all this work is going forward in a very collaborative style. This morning I spoke with, uh, Dan Baldwin and Frank Geisler, uh, two, uh, two different phone calls to just go over those details and figure things out. It's, it's a very collaborative, uh, atmosphere on the peninsula. And I think the community foundation and Dan Baldwin will deliver together with us a great program. Um, we have started working on what I call opening plans. Uh, they include, uh, that we are part of reopening the restaurants, reopening hotels, um, talking about other options, opening retail. Uh, it, it's very important that, that we get prepared for that, uh, opening phase that the governor will, will dictate to us or will allow us, permit us to open stores. Um, we, we have offered the conference center as a training center. Uh, as you all know, there's nothing going on in the conference center for, for the next, for the foreseeable future, unfortunately. But we have a great, uh, opportunity there to train our hospitality workers, our retail workers, our hotel workers in the new normal. And as we are going forward, uh, we, we are, we have offered the, the conference center to become a training center and, uh, shoot through the training center hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of, uh, employees and, and, uh, train them in the new normal. Uh, how do you have to operate a kitchen? How do you have to operate as a server? How do you clean rooms now, et cetera, et cetera? So all those plans, uh, are being worked on, but we are also, uh, proposing to use the conference center as a training center. Um, in our housing office, uh, we are working on the emergency housing assistance. And remember, I reminded you two weeks ago that we are using this term now because that's the term that CDBG and HUD requires us to use. It's not called rental assistance program anymore, but emergency housing assistance. And that's part of this, uh, closed set of rules that CDBG and HUD requires us to comply with. Um, we're working on the guidelines. We're working on the details for the application. Um, we are trying to identify a partner who can help us administering that. And on May 19th, which is in two weeks, we will come back, which, uh, with an amendment to the housing plan that will then, uh, finally allow us, uh, or give us the formal approval from the city council uh, to, to set an emergency housing assistance program into effect. That's an requirement by HUD and that will come to you on May 19th. So again, uh, firing on all cylinders on the citywide side for the various, uh, points that, that will help us to hopefully soon reopen for business. Um, internally, uh, we are working hard on creating our new budget. As you know, our budget has been devastated. We are anticipating losses for June, uh, I apologize, for July, August, September in the neighborhood of 1.5 to 2.2 million dollars per month. So we start with by reestimating our revenue. What do our different department heads think they will, uh, deliver in revenues? And so we have gone out on Friday to all department heads. And by Wednesday, we hope we are getting information back, how our department heads estimate the revenues coming in. And based on that, we will go hard, uh, after expenditure reductions. Those expenditure reductions, uh, will be made on, across all departments, including police and fire. And we need to look at all our accounts, which includes also all of our operational accounts. Uh, last, uh, Wednesday, council, uh, last, yeah, last Wednesday, council member Williamson spoke about, uh, asking staff to look into non-personnel, uh, cost reductions. Yes, that's exactly what, what we were, what we have been doing, what we are doing and what we will present to you, a mix of everything that will include also our, our operational reductions in our accounts. Um, we, we are working also internally in what are our plans for opening the library? What are our plans for the sports center, conference center, recreation center? Uh, if you think about the library, you may have a library that works in the beginning, uh, based on appointment only. Uh, you will have maybe a library that will require, require mandatory wipe zones or closure of public acceptable PCs because we have to clean them all the time or changes will be coming. We are working on those plans. We're also looking very, very closely at what can we actually afford as programming? So there will be programs where, where, where we will basically come back to the city council as part of the budget and say, we cannot afford this program. Do you want to continue to subsidize this program at a cost of 100, 200, 300,000 dollars per year? And it will be your task, council, to help jointly with the staff to figure out what is important, what is not important, where are the price points? So we're working on, on, uh, opening plans, revising our programs, suggesting to cancel programs that are running huge deficits. And look always at what can we actually afford? Uh, and we started 2019, uh, with the parking automation program. Uh, that has progressed very nicely. And, uh, it was of course favored also that the garages were open. Uh, nobody was going in and outside into the garages. And so we could in- install a lot of the technology. And I think by Memorial Day, we have a great deal of our parking, uh, automation, new parking technology implemented and will update you accordingly. Um, in the, in the area of personnel and layoffs, uh, we are talking to every single employee that is on the layoff list, uh, trying to answer all the questions that are out there with respect to the seniority-based bumping rights, uh, health insurance, unemployment, reemployment. Um, so this, this is going on, started, uh, Thursday morning after Wednesday night's council meeting. And, uh, we will update you at our next council meeting on May 19th. We also have received an offer for concessions from the fire management group. Again, we will give you an overview at our next council meeting. And, um, we, we have met with, uh, MEA, the Monterey, uh, the Managers, Employee Association. And, uh, we, we hope really. And uh, we we hope really that we will have updates for you that are showing the willingness of our bargaining units to work in this uh devastated budget and figure out solutions that that will benefit all employees, including those that have been laid off. When I talked about new normal, new concepts, uh, we we have to go faster than than we planned through the fiscal health response plan. I started talking about this in March two thousand eighteen. That was the first time that I used that term uh during a a study session. We have to do all this now. Uh, we did the sales tax measure in uh November. Uh, it will kick in in July. We will get the first money probably in September. Uh, but on the right-hand side is the chart that I showed you the last time. Um, between our revenues and our expenditures in certain programs, we just have two wide margins. And uh, those margins were covered by default and by decision of the council by general fund revenues that came from the hotel tax and the sales tax. And in 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 short, we have to figure out right now, how are we uh bridging those those differences? And there will be operations that will never ever be uh able to balance the revenues with the expenditures. But we need to find a way of coming up with with reasonable uh solutions and reasonable compromises.
Another quick question on on the this uh slide here. For the conference center, could you describe that a little bit better about what the what might be causing that gap in in some potential solutions? I know we'll probably talk about this more when we get into the budget, but I'm just interested in hearing some perhaps initial thoughts in regards to that.
Yeah, but the conference center actually was on a trajectory upwards to almost uh matching revenues with expenditures. Um, the conference center is 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 basically a generator of hotel rooms. And as such, our overriding objective uh in in operating a conference center is to ensure that the hotels around us, around the conference center are full of uh conference participants. And with that, through the T O T, we are earning money uh back into the city coffers. So by definition, the conference center uh has never balanced out between the red and the green. Because if you have the conference center hotels full, guess what? All the other hotels then will uh will experience what is called the compression effects. And if the Marriott and the Pacific Hotel and the Potola Hotel and Spa have no rooms available, guess what? People will go to other hotels. And so from from the perspective of the conference center, uh, we have done great strides and it's it's the objective of us, uh, the general manager and myself to bring the red and the green into balance. But uh, as you can tell, uh, we are not there yet. We were almost there in our projection for fiscal year twenty twenty one. That number looked a lot, a lot smaller, that delta, but we have to revise those numbers right now. And as you can, as you know also, uh, it it's a publicly owned conference center. So there are pressures from us to accommodate certain groups that say, we cannot pay for it, but we'd like to be in your in your building and have a reduced rate. Or hotels uh exercise pressure and saying, we really like this group, but in order to make the deal, can you lower the rental cost for for the rooms? So uh, we we are operating there in in a very interesting business environment. Ha- having said that, uh, we were on track to to almost uh hit the expenses with the revenues. Uh, but going forward now, we 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 start again at a point where we have to catch up. Again, by definition, the conference center is an economic engine. It will fill the hotels. And if the hotels are full, T O T is high, that's how we get paid back.
Thank you. Uh, Hans, may I ask a question about uh the conference center as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the chart shows us uh in the red, the four million and sixty four thousand. So um, I know that's a variety of things, including staff, overhead, maintenance. But is that also including uh the debt service on the most recent remodeling?
No, it does not. So this is, uh, this does not include the T C F D.
Okay, okay, great. So we'll look forward to hearing a little bit more about uh how that breaks out later.
Yeah, and and frankly, um, the the conference center, general manager and I, we were so excited that we were getting to a point uh that that other hotel general managers were telling us, what are you doing? You're not supposed to break even. And we said, of course, we have to break even. We are business like yours. So we were getting very close to that and uh un- unfortunately, we we are starting all over. But give us two years and we will be back roaring.
Yeah, maybe when it's uh the appropriate time, we can get an assessment of what the twenty twenty one uh schedule looks like. I know that they've taken some reservations for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. So it'll be interesting to see how the uh the short horizon, long horizon looks for the conference center bookings.
Yes, yes, sir. And we have some very, very exciting leads uh about which I'm not so public. We really hope this materializes and it will be really uh significant events that we hopefully need for soon.
Okay, great. Thanks.
And that that is my presentation.
Okay, other council comments or questions? Uh, Hans, I I would have one or two. One is, when we went through the recession, we did a a survey and it was in uh in the two thousand eight. Interestingly enough, it was the top two priorities for residents were library and recreation.
Yes.
Neither of which are expected to pay for themselves. Those are, we have fees, obviously. But that's basically, along with public safety, what cities are supposed to do. Provide public safety and libraries and recreation. So when we look at your chart and it looks like there's a lot of red there, that's a basic city function. Secondly, when we uh built the Monterey Sports Center, we put on the ballot at that time, an advisory vote about what level of subsidy would the voters be comfortable with. And it was, would you be comfortable with at least a seventy percent uh return and a thirty percent subsidy? And they were. And we've been over ninety percent on operations, not maintenance. And that's something we're going to have to look at going forward. So we don't want to look at that chart and think and tell the residents, oh, we're just going to start charging left and right to use the library, recreation and sports center. That will not happen. But we will need to be looking at uh some capitalization funds for the Monterey Sports Center, whether it's a surcharge or a very small amount. And in hindsight, we should have done that twenty eight years ago. So we can start building up a fund just for maintenance of the building and improvements and repairs like we would hopefully do in our own homes and our vehicles and anything else. So I would just share that with you. Alan, I'm sorry, did you want to uh say something?
No, I I just said I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So then I think at this point, we'll uh very much uh thank our our city manager for that report. I would be, just to wrap it up, it is interesting that the uh order from the county health officer was talking about uh daycare and also summer camps. I just checked with the superintendent of schools, uh, P K Diffenbaum. And he said they're still looking at their normal August fifth opening date. Um, and I know the schools are are just really scrambling at this point, trying to provide online learning. And so any program coming forward is going to have to come with a plan with protocols in place. The governor said within weeks, and maybe possibly by this Friday, they would be talking about opening some retail stores. And then again, that doesn't mean the doors are wide open. It means under certain protocols and certain shelter in place, certain uh hygienic rules, that these stores are open. But it may be at the point where you have a line as you do at grocery stores right now and limited access. But at least uh, I'm I'm hopeful that if we're looking at preschool, possibly summer camps. The question is, can we do it quickly enough that we can do one of our number one priorities? And that is to bring back our employees to minimize layoffs. And that's just probably our number one objective in this whole crisis. Any other comments? Then we'll just accept the report and move on to the next item? Okay. And I think the next one will really put uh this whole thing, this this whole crisis that we're facing into context. I was just watching Nancy Pelosi, Speaker of the House. And she was talking about, they call it CARES two. And then she's absolutely adamant that there'll be money in that to reach local governments, to add small cities. So that was hopeful. But then again, she has to get that through the Senate, of course, the House and the Senate and get it signed. So there's certainly an understanding that the need is there. And our own Congressman Jimmy Panetta is very much on our side trying to push for relief to local cities. That always raises the question is, once that money reaches Sacramento, how much does the city of Monterey actually get? So I thought uh reading the presentation and the staff report about the letter really does put into context how difficult it is. The state has basically going to come out with a new budget, probably burned through forty billion dollar reserve. Has a two hundred and twenty billion dollar budget that's going to be revised, obviously, downward. And as we know, what the state does when they are hurting, they look around at to the cities for money. So we will have to see how all this unfolds. So again, back to our city manager and we'll have a presentation on a letter on behalf of the council to the governor and the state legislature for a seven billion dollar rent revenue stabilization fund for California cities, asking them to lobby the federal government where that money would come from. Hans?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two weeks ago, when uh our finance director uh showed you also our uh approach to uh recover out of the budget shortfalls. One of the things we also had on on as a bullet point was trying to get uh as much uh grand or other people's money as possible to help stabilize our budget. Um, this certainly is 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 an element of that. And with that, I'm asking Nat to uh briefly present uh this letter that popped up last week uh as part of the California League. And uh, we adjusted it to to Monterey circumstances. And with that, I'll hand it over to Nat.
Great. Thank you, Hans. So to the call to action from the League of California Cities last week, uh, Friday, the league, which represents the city of Monterey as well as the other four hundred eighty one cities in the state of California, uh, had put together a a very strong call to action. And it's asking for cities to make a request to the state, Governor Newsom, as well as the state legislature, to support a seven billion dollar city revenue stabilization fund that would provide direct aid to cities that could address general revenue shortfall over the next two years. Allocating a share of the state's eight point four billion dollar CARES Act funding for cities under five hundred thousand to support COVID nineteen expenses. This should, this should read five hundred thousand, not five hundred thousand dollars, sorry. And also create a COVID nineteen financing vehicle that all cities can access to support cash flow needs. It was very clear from the league, and they've said all along, that cities that are tourism-centric like Monterey are the ones that are most impacted by this pandemic. And that that's very clear based on what we're seeing here in the city of Monterey. Other cities, Napa, San Diego, uh, Lake Tahoe, South Lake Tahoe and other communities are are being faced with massive, massive uh impacts to their organizations that are resulting in in layoffs and and other uh other uh results. In total, the league estimates a total of a two point nine billion dollar loss in sales tax revenue to cities alone and one point three billion dollars in transient occupancy tax, also known as hotel tax, to cities throughout the state of California. It's very clear that we're not alone in this. You can see the headlines. Napa Council declares local fiscal emergency prepares for major budget cutting. CNN, layoffs and spending cuts loom as coronavirus volleys state and city budgets. You know, uh, some of our uh federal elected members think that bankruptcy for state and local governments are are a better approach. States and cities falling off a cliff as the economic crisis sets in. More than twenty one hundred cities bracing for budget shortfalls due to the coronavirus, with many planning cuts and layoffs. I'm not going to read all these headlines, but it just goes on and on and on about how the coronavirus takes its toll on local governments. And that includes the city of Monterey. Cal Matters, perfect storm pluggers, California cities. We're seeing the first uh wave of these impacts and other cities are are following as well. Just as as many of you know, and and this is for the public, more than uh just to reiterate the effects to the and impacts to the city of Monterey in just under sixteen weeks is catastrophic. The temporary layoff of eighty two active regular city employees effective June second, five point three million dollar loss in T O T revenue, one point six million dollar loss in sales tax revenue, zero point seven million dollar loss in conference center revenue and one point nine million dollar loss in parks and recreation fee revenue. As well as our one thirteen point six million dollar deappropriation of capital projects in N C I P, N C I P funds. The city of Monterey, we continue to deliver public services during this pandemic. We proactively closed the library, community centers and sports center, as you know. We opened up our emergency operations center on March sixteenth. We responded to the state on the Grand Princess cruise ship passengers at Isilimar. Many folks don't recognize the fact that our fire department responds to Isilimar and and had to respond to that and uh be active as part of that process. Economic stimulus, rental assistance, tenant protections are all issues that we've played leadership role in, not only in the city, but as a region. Being engaged with the county on the alternate housing site at the fairgrounds and coordinating mass drive with the Chamber of Commerce, as well as, as Hans mentioned today, partial beach closures, patrols and and other efforts. So our recommendation for you this evening is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter on behalf of the city council to Governor Newsom and the state legislature to establish the seven billion dollar revenue stabilization fund for California cities. And a copy of the letter and sample of the letter is included in your packet this afternoon. That's my report for today.
Okay, we thank you very much, Nat, that, as I mentioned earlier, uh, your your report really does summarize the economic devastation that's going on around us and how important this is. Not only for us, but central coast and all of California. Was there any uh public comment in the queue on this item, Nat?
No public comment on the queue for this item either.
All right, uh, council comments or questions, please?
Hey, Mayor, on, I think you presented it pretty well uh with your comments just now. And so with that, I would like to go ahead and just make a motion to approve this last recommendation group to have you sign the letter and send it off to state leaders.
Second.
Okay, motion second, big question, please?
Yes, yes. Um, I discussed some of these points with uh our city manager prior to the meeting. So I just wanted to to highlight, I think the letter is fine and captures uh absolutely all of the points that are significant. I just wanted to point out, and uh with uh the permission of the motion maker, that we we give a little bit more guidance to uh the city manager for adding uh a few things. Um, one of the things I wanted to point out is I think we should acknowledge that the city of Monterey uh was just approaching the two hundred and fiftieth year. And also to recognize the history of Monterey. Not that we belabor it and have to spend a lot of time in the letter, but I I just believe that we ought to reference what Monterey is so that we stand out and distinguish ourselves among the over five hundred cities. Uh, that this, these letters are going to go to his staff and to him. I just think that we ought to be able to recognize the historical significance of Monterey, being that it's the location of the uh signing of the first state uh constitution, as well as, you know, considered the first city of California. So just a little bit of language addition to recognize what Monterey is, uh, our past, our history and the two hundred and fifty years. And with that, I just think that's the only suggestions I have.
Is that okay with a motion or a second?
Yes, absolutely. And actually, you you did jog my memory. Um, during my talks at Tyler yesterday, this conversation came up in regards to this letter. And um, I'm wondering if maybe we can include language in there as well to see if there's any effort to do this, to expedite it as quickly as possible so that we can get the fund. If there's any effort to do this to expedite it as quickly as possible so that we can get the fund, funding to support the services that are, are desperately needed within the community.
Absolutely, we can add that as well.
We will, and, and we plan to, beyond just sending this letter, uh, make phone calls and, and reach out. Great feedback from Councilmember Smith and Williamson, thank you.
Okay, so any more discussion? I don't see it, so roll call, please, on the motion to approve the letter to the governor with our fingers crossed.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. Again, it, it's such an excellent letter and a really good summary that I, I'm hoping that if. We can have some circulation so our residents and businesses realize, uh. How difficult. The economic situation is going forward and any help that they can get would is much appreciated. Well, so the next item is a resolution to temporarily. Amend the salary schedule and delay implementation of it. Oh, we didn't, we do roll call? Yeah. No? Are we okay?
We did roll call it, passed.
Okay, thank you. My second senior moment of the evening. I forget what the first one was.
Well, you're the mayor, we can do it again if you want.
Oh, yeah, well, you know what Ronald Reagan said? He said he watches TV and when he, he got Alzheimer's and Ronald Reagan said. He never saw any rerun. Yeah. You're not. That accepting of that situation. Okay, uh, we've had a employee group that is stepping up and we're so grateful for that. And we'll get the details now from our city manager, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hand it over to our excellent HR Director, Alison Hall, please.
Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, this is a very short presentation, we've already spoken about this last week. Um, the offer from the Memea Group, which is our executive department head team, and then also the confidential executive managers with that proposal, um, on some concessions. The, as I said, this is the Memea Group and then confidential executives. And then, um, this includes now all executive staff, all department heads, um, except the city manager and city attorney. Because they've already provided a ten percent salary reduction May first and deferred their two percent salary increase till next January. So with, um, this before you tonight, this will include now all department heads and executives in the concessions. Um, the fiscal impact of the concessions, oh, let me just actually. Um, the concession that's before you tonight is a eight percent salary reduction starting May first, going through November first of two thousand and twenty. Um, and then also to delay the January first salary, July first salary increase. Delay that two percent salary increase to January of two thousand and twenty-one. The fiscal impact in this is a thirteen thousand dollar monthly savings in May and June across all funds, which is eleven thousand three hundred per month for the general fund. And then, starting in July, after the delay of that two percent that's already been budgeted, it will increase to a sixteen thousand two hundred dollar in monthly savings, July through October. And then when that eight percent, um, is then restored, it goes back to a three thousand two hundred dollars in monthly savings from November to December. This gives a cumulative expenditure reduction of ninety seven thousand four hundred across all funds. Eighty four thousand six hundred to the general fund. Um, so that's the total amount of the concession. So we're asking for you to, um, pass the resolution to temporarily amend the salary schedule and delay the implementation of the negotiated salary increase. Um, as we discussed last week, the council did pass a one thousand dollar severance pay. Um, for each employee that is on the proposed, uh, temporary layoff list, I'm sorry, the approved temporary layoff list. Um, so that severance pay has already been approved. And so we did discuss that we were hoping, the Memea Group was hoping that this could go to help fund that, um, since we know that we have other. Expenditure reduction matters that will have to be addressed. And also wanted to express to you that the, the department heads, as discussed previously, are aware that there are going to have to be other departmental expenditure reductions. But this is the concession that those groups wanted to bring forth, um, at this time. And so we ask that you recommend, that you approve this resolution.
Okay. Uh, thanks so much, Alison.
Yeah.
Any, anyone, uh, Nat and the public who wanted to comment on this item?
Yes, we do, we have, uh, one public comment, uh, so far and, uh. Ms. Laura Pratt, uh, we'll unmute you. And, uh. Welcome to the call. Laura, are you there?
Hi, Laura Pratt, I'm here. And, uh. Budget was passed and, um, the one real comment I have was. That you just can't keep balancing the budget on our backs, the lowest paid employees of the city of Monterey. So I'm gonna top that out again. And. The other items that I had, um, is, you know, I've discussed raising the T O T for about ten years now. My understanding from Hans and from other people is that if we don't get it on. The November ballot this year to raise the T O T to be more in line with our. Other, um. Nearby tourist destination cities. Then we have to wait another two years in order to do that. And I just think it would be. Unconscionable as a city. That it would be forty years before we've raised our T O T. So I know hospitality is hurting. But I also know that. They, they tend to, um, say that. As, as opposed to wanting to get their T O T raised. Um, so I understand that everybody's hurting right now. We all are. But I just want to remind you again to please not balance the budget on our backs on the lowest paid employees. And instead look to other revenue streams like increasing the T O T, which again has not been done for thirty-seven, thirty-eight years. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. There is no further public comment at this time.
Okay, good, um, council questions or comments?
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, make another motion, if I may, to approve the staff recommendation.
Uh, second? Is Tyler muted? I didn't hear him.
Um, he made a motion to approve and Ed seconded.
Oh, there we go, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, Tyler, my, my computer went down to zero on his microphone. So Tyler, if you wouldn't mind repeating what you said, please?
Yep, so I, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay. I'm glad I asked. Did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, any comments, Councilmember Ed?
Uh, yeah, just a, a comment of saying thank you to the, the groups that have stepped forward to assist. Uh, these are trying times as we've, we've had several meetings in the past and don't need to repeat the things that we've. All observed, but I just want to say thanks for those that have reached out and thank you to, uh, those that have negotiated and, uh. Been so willing to be able to, uh, give back a raise that they just, uh, negotiated and, and quite frankly, they deserved it. Um, we went through a process and we felt that the raises were merited. And so we appreciate the contributions of, uh, the groups that are listed to this agenda package that are, uh, doing their part to help us out with. A tremendous amount of savings on a monthly basis, so thank you to those groups.
Oh, good, thank you. Ed, anyone else?
I'd just like to echo that, uh, sentiment that we appreciate, um. The contributions of all of our employees and we appreciate the contributions of, um, the groups today who've stepped forward and, um. Are, are showing leadership by, um, helping us address this fiscal crisis.
All right, thank you, Alan. All right, seeing no one else, then I'll ask Clementine to do roll call, please?
Certainly, Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
And yes, for me as well. Okay, agenda. Okay, uh, item that we're going to go on to council member. Comments and requests to agendize new matters. And I'm, I'm going to thank very much, uh, Councilmember Tyler for his patience. We've had some very difficult council meetings that have been tough on us and. And, and of course, uh, the layoffs were especially, especially excruciating and needed the time that they took. And so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Williamson. I, and it's about the third time it's been on the agenda and you have presented a very nice, uh, written. Proposal as well, so I'll ask you to go ahead and, uh, summarize what you're thinking, please?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, it's, you know, I, I'm definitely always willing to be a team player, so. Um, I appreciate, you know, the council's patience and, uh, in, in taking on this and, and other issues that, that I've been presenting to the council. So, um, I, I'll just say that M B E P is a, is a regional partner, um, uh, a, a regional body that. Um, is at the front line of the COVID nineteen response. Uh, they've developed a regional list of resources for communities to navigate these uncertain times. Uh, resources include an internet resource guide and easy to read guide on what new funding is provided for businesses in the CARES Act. An analysis of services provided in regional municipalities. And most interesting to me, and I'm assuming for this council who has identified housing as a priority for our residents. They've developed a COVID nineteen housing response position paper. Additionally, they've led and, and continue to lead the effort to bring the twenty twenty California Economic Summit to the city of Monterey. Which has been selected to be hosted in our city in December. This will mark. The ninth annual gathering of private, public and civic leaders from across California's diverse regions. The summit's bipartisan network of business, equity, environmental and civic organizations is unique and championing. Solutions that meet the triple bottom line, simultaneously growing the economy, improving environmental quality and increasing opportunity for all. I'll end with, again, housing. Housing was identified as a priority by this council and M B E P's Action Center is central in our need to turn out those who support innovative solutions to our housing problems. In combination with their white paper, which our city has utilized in a review of our city's policies towards housing development. This makes M B E P an obvious partner in our housing priority. Additionally, the M B E P staff has supported the Monterey Peninsula Housing Coalition in a quasi-staff role. I can't say it in any clearer, M B E P is an essential partner and the city's investment will be well worth it. Whether it's regarding housing, again, a high priority for the council, or financial sustainability, another top priority. Which they'll be a strong partner in our COVID nineteen economic recovery. Anyone with that? Interested in hearing from colleagues?
And was, uh, Nat, was there any public comment on this?
I am, uh, checking now, we do not have any public comment for this item.
Okay, and question, the cost, uh. We, we are a member of M B E P and there's just, uh, there's a cost associated with it and how much money are we talking about?
I believe it's five K, I'm not sure if that's correct.
Hans? I, 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 it was five thousand dollars, I mean, two years ago, so it might be. Slightly higher, between five to six thousand.
Okay, so the, the question before the council is. Is this something that we want to agendize for a future meeting? We're not, uh, making a decision whether we want to join M B E P or, or contribute. We're already a member, it's a question of do we want to commit funds to M B E P? Um, and put that on the agenda in the future. So, uh, Councilmember Dan?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I moved to agenda as the question, we should discuss the idea of, of rejoining, um, M B E P.
Okay. Uh, is there a second? Let me ask if there's a second first.
Um, I, I feel second, um, I, I do feel like. In a normal time, this could be really a no brainer, I think it's a little more difficult in this fiscal time, but I, I think it's worth having the discussion. So I will tell them that.
All right, motion second, discussion, Councilmember Ed, please?
Um, yeah, I guess. There's really no other way to do this except for agendize it so we can really. Weigh the merits and say yes in favor or no, not in favor of, uh, joining again. Um, I believe we were a member from the start. And then we did not renew. And I think it's been three years now that we have not had the renewal. So I would ask staff if you could come back with that for the next. Agenda item, um, as it gets on the council, but we would see the, the history, obviously, what does it cost? Uh, moving forward, does it require anything more than a one-year commitment? Um, how long were we members? And, uh, then I'll give my reasons why I'm not going to support it.
Yep.
Okay, so Ed, did you want a staff response to your questions right now?
No, I think if it's just included in the staff report when they come back with an agenda. Or at least they can be prepared that we can hear, hear that verbal report when we come back.
All right. Other, other, uh, requests, direction, and when this is brought back? Okay, the question I would have is. As, as we know, we're going to be looking at all, uh. All of our, um. Non-personnel contributions, all of the groups that the city does belong to, some of which are. Statutorily required, some are not. I would be interested to know when this comes back and I can support the motion, just if the way we can be a participant. And somehow hold off on. Any monetary contributions until we're through this, uh. Emergency, this fiscal emergency we're having. In other words, can we, what, have our cake and eat it too? And so ask that we can come back to that. And I know five thousand dollars doesn't sound like a lot of money, but. We, and, and I'm, I'm looking at, um. Every dollar that we can save keeps employees from being laid off. So that's what, that is question I would enjoy having, can we be a participant and take advantage of this local resource? And at the same time, not have to commit funds during the COVID nineteen crisis.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I add another comment?
Please.
Uh, the, these are always, um, a, a little awkward because on the one hand. I think we all want to kind of talk about this now, but what's in front of us is, do we move it forward and bring it back on the agenda? So we've heard, we've heard from, um. Uh, Mr. Williamson and we want to put it on the agenda and, and come back, so. But at the, the other hand, I want to be totally honest and say that, um, as I said, I'm not going to, uh. Support spending that kind of money. Uh, but I do want to learn more about how much it is and what some of the, the other moving parts of this are, because we have not heard. That part of, uh, or any staff report on that. But I'm already predisposed to make the decision of what I'm going to vote for in the future. So for that reason, I'm just not going to support this being. On the agenda to come back to us, because I, I want to just be totally honest, I'm already going to vote no. So tonight, I'm not going to support the item coming back. For any future consideration because of the cost, because of this, uh, current fiscal situation we're in. I just don't want to spend the money. I think it's too much and I don't think it gives me, uh, the return that I was looking for when we were a member. So I'm not going to support this tonight.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? All right, seeing none, roll call, please, Clementine.
Yes, Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
And yes.
Okay.
All right, so it passes four to one. Thank you, we'll, we'll look forward to further discussion on this.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, well, thank you for bringing it to us. And so, uh, council comments, since you're on the middle of my screen, Tyler, I'm going to start with you. Do you have council comments you'd like to share with us?
Well, no, um, no, I'm good. I, 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 I want to help us maintain some kind of record here, I think we're going to meet tonight, so I, I'll, I'll defer my, uh, my comments for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, I've got, uh, fourteen items I want to talk about.
You can use Tyler's time, okay?
Thank you, Tyler, appreciate it.
I yield to the senator from, uh, California.
Yeah, yeah, well, this senator is not going anywhere but Monterey, so. Um, just, just a quick couple of, uh, comments. Um, a lot of feedback, like all of. Lot of feedback, like all of you have, I'm sure, on the amount of activities that our community is seeing. The streets and the roadway work that's being done for or from Measure P, Measure S, Measure G with sales tax just starting up, and of course, Measure X. So the public has given many comments to me to pass along to the city staff, for the folks that are out there working so hard. And it's encouraging to see, on the one hand, while we quarantine, we feel like we're closed. On the other hand, when folks are going out to get their groceries or go to get their to-go meal or get their neighborhood exercise, they're telling me that it feels like Monterey is really open, and they appreciate that. And they appreciate all the work that's being done by our city staff that's working so hard. I want to echo the city manager's comments on the boat launches. Look forward to seeing how that can work out, but that's been a high priority for my last two weeks and receiving emails and phone calls. That's very important that we participate in our ocean. For us that were born and raised here, the ocean is part of us. And folks that look forward to the sports season that just started May 1st are anxious to take their boat, maybe a son or daughter, and be able to go out and grab a salmon and enjoy that. So that's a high priority for those people that I've talked to recently. Lots of emails on that. The other thing is, this one is kind of a concept. I just want to throw it out there. When we're in a crisis, we have to remind ourselves and we have to do multiple things. And I believe our city leadership and staff is doing that. And it's not all just COVID-19, but it's COVID-19 and everything else. But I think that as we, as we shift to working through the crisis and getting back to opening everything up, I think we need to look at opportunities to be able to fully engage at a different pace. And I give you an example. As we don't have the marketing staff for long term at the convention center, and as the Monterey County Convention Center Bureau has reduced its staff, is there a way we can embrace what we know the region's gonna be doing, which is marketing probably more leisure, localized, Central California, drive to Monterey within two or three hours? So as we take our internal resources, can we shift to participate in helping out with that messaging by using our outstanding messaging team that gives us daily and weekly updates? Can we embrace another version of Monterey's participation of outreach to advertise, to participate, to make sure that within two, three hours of Monterey, everyone else out there in those other communities realize that Monterey welcomes them back? And we know that there will be probably great prices, deals, and we want to see the drive-in traffic come back. So just want to think in terms of how we can use our local resources to do that. And we've got some fantastic media folks and our daily briefings or the updates we get through Lori. If there's a way to expand that to include other regions to make sure that people come back to Monterey sooner rather than later. So I want to advertise us to make sure everybody knows that Monterey is ready to embrace. As we get through our phases, as we go to Phase 2 and Phase 3, how do we, how do we get folks coming back to the normalcy? And use our local resources to do that, because we may not have the funds to spend on marketing, but how can we market ourselves collectively together?
Thank you, Ed. Excellent. Councilmember Allen?
Um, I will defer my comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dan?
No comment at this time.
Okay, appreciate that. I'll just wrap it up. I've got a special file on my computer. It's called Budget COVID-19. Perhaps not the most suspicious title ever, but I try to keep, the thing that keep me up at night on this list. So if I wake, when I was being awake, I think about what's important. I want to share with you, we got an incredible letter from our library trustees. And quote, "It is deeply sad and shocking to see the global cases rise and the increased loss of jobs and stability. These are not just numbers. They are our colleagues, friends, and loved ones. We look forward with you to finding solutions to the unforeseen circumstances that are damaging our city," unquote. Then as we look at, I have a list of challenges. I've read that we may be looking nationwide as at a 40% decline in the gross domestic product. We still don't know what the impact of state deferring sales tax is going to look like. We certainly are hoping that Congress will fund small cities. And we note that tourist-based economies are most heavily impacted. And I've said it before, all of that beautiful assets that we have, a sports center, a conference center, a large recreation department, childcare, and all of our military installations and our schools. All of these are wonderful assets, and several of them, including the conference, that were the first ones to get hit because they're based very much on our tourist economy. So I'm thinking about that, and I think the message would be, again, what the library board said, we look forward with you. And to that, I would say our residents, our employees, our executive staff, to finding solutions to the unforeseen circumstances that are damaging to the city. The last thing I want to see are more layoffs. And the first thing I want to see is all of our wonderful employees that are on the list to come back as soon as possible. So we continually want to use the word temporary. And so with that, unless there's anything else, I think we're finished. City manager, comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, no comments from me.
Okay, so I think, I think we've covered everything. And we'll adjourn with the recognition to Councilmember, what did I miss? I heard a voice.
Yep, no, we're just one item.
We're going to closed session, my bad. We're gonna go to closed session. Thank you. And we'll.
And we will open up a public comment also, actually, for closed session. We've had a chyron here for the last minute or so, inviting members of the public to comment for any items that are on the closed session before we adjourn to closed session. And no one has called in. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. So we've set a new record, and so we were joined to closed session in gratitude to everybody who took a pass on council comments. Let's, let's get back together in about 11 minutes at 5:45 for closed session. So we'll see you all shortly. Thank you to our council, our staff, and all, everybody who was watching. We really appreciate your input and teamwork. Good evening.